This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles, here. Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Eccles.
Here.
Billingsley.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask President Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather today, Father. We thank you for the privilege of being in your presence, Father, and being in the presence of the wonderful citizens of our great city, Father. We ask that you will continue to guide us, Father, and lead our decision-making, Father, lead our judgment, that we may be good stewards of all that we've been entrusted with, Father, and that we may make good citizens, good citizens, Father, and good decisions, Father. We thank you for the opportunity. We thank you for your love. We thank you for your grace and your mercy. So it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and City Council meeting held on September 8th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of September 4th through the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, do we have any? No proclamations? Unfinished business? We have none today? This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 510 Pioneer Street in District 1. The last known owners are Gilbert Hardy, Zelma Humphrey, and heirs of Jessie Mae Hardy, James H. Lett, and Robert Lett as heirs of Eliza Dilett. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in June of 2013. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1513 Terrace Drive in District 1, the last known owner being Rosie L. Chapman. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in July of last year. There have been no improvements to the property. There was a building permit taken out in July. I have talked with the owner. They could possibly be obtaining a demolition permit to take care of this themselves, but I explained I would be asking for a resolution today, and that's what I am. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 10, I'm sorry, 102 North 10th Street in District 2, the last known owner being Randall W. Withrow. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in April of 2013. There was actually a house involved in this process as well that has been torn down by the property owner. What remains is a garage apartment. We also have a letter on file with the owner's intention of donating this property to the city, which is immediately behind the city parking lot that we just created at 10th and East Broad. My recommendation today is the council pass a resolution abating. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1213 Alabama Avenue in District 3, the last known owner being Lionel Pear. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Come on, sir. Mr. Pear, if you would, just come to the podium and give us your name and address, please.
James L. Pear, 1216 Alabama Avenue. We had a building permit for it many years ago, and me and my mother and father were working on it. But truly, I nearly missed my mother, and I asked my father if we could talk to the owner, Ms. Harper, about maybe trimming the trees back or doing something, and he said, "No, we're not gonna mess with her." I've honored his wish and asked her grandchildren to, you know, if they wanted to buy the lot, house and everything for $5,000, that I'd be glad to say. And now, at some point, I will donate it to Ms. Harper. I will sign it over to her. No charge, I'll pay the lawyer fee. And if y'all will let me do that, then they will go along with it, which I don't know. They may, you know, be opposed to tearing down the house, what it costs to do that, but I myself just had a tax written on it three weeks ago, and thank the Lord it's all good. But I'd like to do what I can to basically try to move on and enjoy my military retirement. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pear. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in September of 2013. There have been no improvements. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I would go ahead and make a motion to abate this nuisance.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
I guess I ask the question. I'm trying to understand what he was trying to convey to us as to what he wanted to do with the property. I didn't understand.
I think he said he wanted to donate it to the neighbors if they would take it, but you haven't talked to them about donating yet, right?
Well, I tried to have a discussion with my grandson. He wants to pay it. He wants to pay it. It's hard for a day of your own. And I wasn't saying anything. I said, "I'll do my father's wish." I said, "I live in a family that's a bad, and I pay small fees for it, and I ain't give it to them, but I can go across the street and get it."
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Y'all want to talk to him about it.
Mr. Pear, if you'll just stick around after the meeting and meet with Mr. Harbison, I think there's better alternatives.
Okay.
All right. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1501 Alabama Avenue in District 3. The last known owners are the estate of Virginia L. Shaq, heirs Chris John Shaq and Jennifer Shaq. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Ma'am, if you would, come to the podium and just give us your name and address, please.
Jennifer Shaq. I just want to know if I can have time to find out what my brother wants to do, if he wants to fix it and keep my mom and dad with the six.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of 2014. There have been no improvements. There was a building permit taken out in June of last year. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 1310 Etowah Avenue in District 3, the last known owner being White's Chapel Missionary Baptist Church, Crosspoint Community Church. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves an old school, an old church building. We started our process in May of 2014. There have been no improvements to the property. I've met on the property with a couple of prospective buyers, but I haven't heard anything before today. There are no permits to improve. We're asking for a resolution to abate the nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 619 Newton Street in District 5. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Goodwin &amp; Head LLC, with Michael Head, David Goodwin, and the Exchange Bank of Alabama. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a burned house. We started our process in May of 2012. There have been no improvements of a couple of permits during that time. We've dealt with three different owners. As you can see in the picture and the paper, the house is still unsecure, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate the nuisance.
My name is Courtney Bruington, and I live on Randall Street. The front of my house faces Newton, and so we get the great joy of looking at this property all the time. And we've had six families move in the neighborhood of Randall and Newton, which is complementary to Gadsden, which means people want to move in. However, we don't want to walk our dogs and our kids and pass by these houses. This house in particular has been called twice by myself from police because people have been coming in. The door's left wide open, there's no condemnation sign posted on the front of this house. It was condemned in January 2011 and burned in December 2010. Now, y'all have been really good about getting things down, and I've gone back and looked at minutes and agendas, and it hasn't taken this long to get something done on a home. So not only do I hope to get the nuisance abated today, but also to see it quickly moved to a demolition. The owner, part-owner of this home is Michael Head, who's also the Etowah County Coroner. He gets taxpayer money, and if any demolition is done on the home, which I pray it is, since he's co-owner of this home, I'm also proposing that half of the taxpayers' money that goes for the demolition comes out of his paycheck. It's not right to take taxpayer money as a check and then also use taxpayer money and get the house demolished. Thank you for your time.
Amen.
What is the pleasure of the council?
I move that we abate the nuisance quickly.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, that's a discussion. Somehow miraculously, this house was taken off the list of whatever, and I was approached by some of the neighbors, and I spoke with Mr. Harbison, and hopefully this lot will be taken care of expeditiously. But anyway, it's back on the list now to take care of, and we're gonna take care of that.
All right. Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. Items 16 through 20 are all public hearings. They're resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property. This is for demolition that's already been performed, and we have five locations. I'm going to read the addresses and names, and anyone who wishes to speak about any of these may come forward. 1006 Avenue G, it's in District 3, $3,055.92. 1432, 1434 Alabama Street, District 3, $4,291.40. 430 U.A. Avenue, District 3, $4,146.40. 14 Cabot Avenue, District 6, $4,246.88. And 715 Dodge Lane, District 7, $4,666.88. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all five resolutions, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five.
Item number 21 is a resolution rejecting bid number 3292 for seeding and mulching. Only one bid was received, and it was over budget. The NEAPA coordinator attempted to meet with the vendor to negotiate pricing and has recommended that the project be rebid at a later date. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business? Do we have any items of new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have one today, please. This resolution rescinding, this is a resolution rescinding resolution number R-0185. I'd like to ask unanimous consent for this, please.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for passage, please.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, all this is, we're doing the $400,000 from industrial development. Instead of giving them 4,000 per year, we're just gonna make it so much, divide that by 12 into a monthly basis, like we do with all other outside agencies. That's all that is.
It's a cash management strategy, essentially.
Yes. Just trying to get everybody on the same playing field as everybody else.
Is there any additional discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have one other one. I'd like to offer the motion of a resolution authorizing a roadblock to be held September 26th at the intersection of East Broad and George Wallace Boulevard.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is a roadblock that representatives of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority authorized for a roadblock for Sickle Cell Walk-a-Thon. This is a public service announcement that, for a charitable organization.
Okay. Is there any additional discussion? No plugs? Councilwoman Toles?
Later.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President. I have one from a request from the Transportation Department asking unanimous consent on a resolution authorizing an agreement with Route Match Software.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is, will help the Transportation Department, and the cost will be $6,000 for the first year.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President.
You want to do it, okay.
I have one from Parks and Recreation Department, and this is an agreement authorizing sponsorship for the Gadsden Runners Club for Rock and Roll Run event that they're gonna have on October the 3rd. I think this was done last year, so this is just a continuation, and we're supporting Parks and Recreation, and I ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Mr. President, I have one. It's a resolution 415 authorizing agreement with CDG Engineers or Engineering Services for the Culver repair on Rivers River View Drive. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business? Department reports, committees, boards. Remarks by the mayor and council. Mayor?
Oh, sir, I don't have any.
Councilwoman Toles?
I just want to reemphasize about the roadblock, but this is in support of the Sickle Cell Walk. This is really sponsored by the Alabama, but our sorority is a public service sorority, and one of our projects is to support Sickle Cell, and it's very dear to us because we lost a member a couple of years ago who was a Sickle Cell person. She died basically because of that. And so we support this, and we're asking on September the 26th, which is a Saturday, but the big walk-a-thon will be coming up October the 10th, and I understand we have some honorary chairs, which is, the mayor is one, but please support Sickle Cell. They're always looking for support, and they're also looking for research to find a cure for Sickle Cell.
Thank you, Councilwoman Toles. Councilman Evans? Councilman Worthy?
No.
Councilman Billingsley?
Yes, I had a community meeting last night, and one of the things that the citizens brought up a whole lot was police presence. And I try to tell people the police is just like teachers. We need them, and of course, they can't be everywhere all the time, and I think we have to understand that it's a serious problem, theft and stuff like that in the neighborhood. We have to just be mindful that the police cannot be everywhere at one time. Of course, we need them when we have emergencies and things like that, but our police department does a good job, in my opinion. I mean, just like anything else, there are some good people and there are a few bad ones, but we also cannot throw out everything just because of one or two bad ones. So I want to tell people to just bear with the police department and do what you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Billingsley. Councilman Cannon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to remind everybody that October 29th is our annual trick-or-treat on Wall Street. Alabama Sea Merchants are working hard. That's gonna be on Thursday night this year, October 29th, from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock. There'll probably be, we're from 3,000 to 5,000 little kids down on Wall Street getting their candy and stuff, and there'll be games down there inflatable, so we're just looking forward to seeing everyone down there.
Thank you, Councilman Cannon. Councilman Reed?
I wasn't gonna say anything, but when Billy came forth with the police department, I want to agree with him, but I want to emphasize one thing. There's eight to 12 minutes, I believe, between the time you call and the policeman can get there. And that's where my argument comes. The citizens need to be protecting themselves during that period of time. So you better read up and know what you're doing, what you're carrying, and what you're gonna use it for, and the implications later on.
Did want to confirm, so the walk, the roadblock is Saturday, the 26th, for the Sickle Cell event, and the date of the walk-a-thon is what again?
It's October the 10th, and it's going to be at the Mott Glosser Amphitheater.
Okay. October 10th.
From 8:00 to 12:00 noon.
So 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Just wanted to be clear about that, so that there was no confusion about the roadblock versus the walk-a-thon, so.
And Councilman Evans has already given me money to go in the bucket. So I already have my first donation for the roadblock.
He's got more. All right. So, and the only other thing that I have is, we had a very good turnout this morning at the Chamber Building in support of an advocacy for e-fairness, for those of us that, you know, may not be familiar with that or may not have been following it. But e-fairness is essentially an initiative that's being pushed throughout the country to address the issue of uncollected sales tax that, it's actually uncollected internet sales tax. They have identified the number as $23 billion.
They have identified the number as $23 billion each year that goes uncollected, so it's not a new tax. It's essentially a tax that the states are not collecting, and so it's revenue that cities are missing out on that could actually fill the gaps that we're experiencing from a budgetary standpoint. So it's just really something to educate yourself on. We, what was very, very noticeable and concerning is that we don't have, there are 25 sponsors. There are actually two bills that are in committee, and one in the House and one in the Senate, and there are actually 25 sponsors or cosponsors of those bills, and not one of those cosponsors is an Alabama congressman. So that's concerning, but again, we want to encourage everyone to both educate yourself about e-fairness. Marketplace fairness is what it used to be called, but they're attempting, advocates are attempting to rebrand it because marketplace fairness was a Democratic term, and so e-fairness is a more bipartisan, neutral term, but it means a lot for cities, especially in this day and age when we don't have a comprehensive transportation budget or a comprehensive transportation plan. This kind of revenue would allow us to fill the gaps as it relates to some of our infrastructure projects and our municipal projects. So it's a big deal, and it really is. I think if more people understood what it entails and what it was about, I think more people would be actively and very vocally advocating for it. So we'll be providing information for the public so that people will know, you know, what this is all about. Okay? If there's nothing else, entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Second.[1762.91]